Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of October 9th, 2012. I'd like to thank the Garden Club for the flowers they always provide for our meeting. Thank you very much. Uh, roll call please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here. Here.
City Manager Jackson, please lead us in the first place.
Sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number three, our announcement, the city clerk announces vacancies on commissions, boards, and committees due to routine resignations and expired terms and invites residents to apply. Carol?
Every other year, half of the members of our boards, commissions, and committees have the opportunity to reapply for their positions. This year, we had two members who did not reapply, and we now have openings on the Bike and Pet Committee and the Citizens Crime Prevention Committee. And at the last meeting, we had a person who resigned. So now, we have two openings on citizens crime prevention. So I would like to invite everyone and anyone that they can apply for these positions. They're advertised in the newspaper, they'll be on cable, they'll be in focus, and you're welcome to apply.
Thank you. And...
Through the chair.
Vice Mayor.
City Clerk, there's openings, but also, there are new terms. So, does that mean that the expired terms, even though they are reapplying, they are still, have to be approved again?
Yes, that will be at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Good. And since we have a very captive audience tonight, commissions, boards, and committees run an awful large part of this city. And it's a lot of fun, it's a lot of work at times, but it's getting to know what the city is all about and helping us structure policy going forward. So I encourage anyone who's interested to please, please submit their name. Item number four, presentation, something we look forward to every year. The first one is the present, Present the Beautification Task Force Awards. And Irene, I'll let you take this over.
Thank you. I don't know if this is working or not. Actually, I'm going to break tradition today, and we're having Melody Tobin, who is a member of the Beautification Task Force, to do the presentations tonight. So I'll hand it over to Melody.
Hi, good evening. Melody Tobin, the Beautification Task Force. We are a volunteer committee in the city. All are welcome to join us, and we encourage you to come and join the Beautification Task Force. If you want to get involved in the city, if you believe in recycling, and you just want to do a little something to get involved, we are your group. We meet the first Thursday of every month at 5:15 at City Hall. We put on, every year, we put on Operation Clean Sweep, the first Saturday in May. We also sponsor the Beautification Awards and a number of recycling projects throughout the city. So there are no requirements, you do not have to apply, all are welcome, and all you have to do to join us is come to the meeting the first Thursday of any month at City Hall at 5:15. Okay? And, so we're moving on to the Beautification Awards. This is an annual event that we like to recognize those in San Bruno that show curb appeal. And the award program is designed to recognize the efforts of residents who strive to improve the physical appearance of our community. The focus is on the exteriors of homes requiring a significant commitment on the part of the property owner or renter. Our first category is improved residential property. So this is somebody who has made an improvement from last year. And our most improved property is, this is the before picture of 2951 Crestmore Drive, and this is the after. And the most improved property award goes to James and Laura Blunt. And if you're here this evening, yes, Laura, come on up. For you, we have a sign to proudly display in your front yard for many years to come. The signs are provided to us by Prudential California Realty, and we appreciate their participation every year. We have a certificate for you and a $50 check. Would you like to say anything?
It was a lot of work. We did all, I did all by myself.
Thank you, we appreciate you beautifying your neighborhood. Thank you so much. And we look forward to seeing you display that proudly in your front yard.
Thank you.
Okay, our next category, single-family residents curb appeal. The following residences were nominated by their neighbors, friends, or BTF members in the single-family residents curb appeal category. We'd like to acknowledge and thank them for their efforts towards beautifying San Bruno. They are greatly appreciated. So the first slide, 200 Almador was a nominee, and we're going to run through the nominees. 3790 Coronado Way, 3890 Madera Avenue, 3920 Colby Way, 3611 Exeter Avenue, 281 Castleton Way, 1991 Niles Avenue, 1157 Glenview Avenue, 737 Cypress Avenue, 519 Hawthorne Avenue, 2480 Bennington Avenue. And the winners are, second place, 3350 Longview Drive, and Donald and Luz Maria Magni. Are you here this evening? Yes, thank you. So come on up. Come on over, we want to acknowledge you. We have a certificate for you and a check. Inside, you'll find a check. Would you like to say anything?
I would like to say something here, ma'am.
We thank you. We want you to know that improvements that you make to your residents that improve curb appeal absolutely improve San Bruno, and we appreciate your efforts. They don't go unnoticed. Thank you. And first place, 1950 Niles Avenue, Doris Craig. I love that expression of shock. No. Did I say your last name correctly?
Craig.
Craig.
Yeah, well, it doesn't match my...
Oh, no, it does. Doris Craig, would you like to say anything, Doris?
Well, thank you very much.
Come right up to the microphone, Doris.
Come right up to the microphone.
Well, all I can say is I just love to garden, and it's great to get a prize for what you love to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Doris. We look forward to you proudly displaying that in your front yard, making all your neighbors jealous. We're going to move on to the next category, which is zerriscaping. And the definition of zerriscaping, the following residents were nominated by their neighbors, friends, or members of the BTF. We'd like to acknowledge them for breaking tradition, taking out their lawns, and trying something different. These nominees have planted their front yards with zerriscaping. It's a landscaping that uses low-water, drought-resistant plants. And the first nominees, 2030 Spyglass Drive, 3270 Fasman Drive, 2125 Seacliff Way, 660 Acacia Avenue, 830 Canes Avenue, 122 Cypress Avenue, this is another picture, 122 Elm Avenue, 820 Angus Avenue. And the winners are, second place, 201 Castleton Way, Jungin Smith. Come on up. Thank you. You are very brave to zerriscap. We have a certificate and a check for you. Did I say your name right? Jungin?
Jungin.
Jungin?
Yeah.
Would you like to say anything?
I think you are, you give me more encouragement, because my last time was year 2000. I got my first beautification.
An award?
Yes.
Thank you. That's great. Excellent. Thank you so much. And was it, that was before zerriscaping, correct? That was a yard?
Yes, yes.
And when did you change to zerriscaping?
I think this five years. The first time I do the, my left side, then since the last floodfall, I started to do my right side, and everything by my two hands.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. So that goes to show, you do not need a professional landscaper. All of our winners tonight, so far, have told you they did it themselves. So we're going to move on to the winner for the zerriscaping category, is 2150 Seacliff Way, Bernard Kawhi and Irish Chrisino. Are you here this evening? Yes, come on up. Irish?
Yes.
Chrisino?
Oh, thank you.
And Bernard?
Yes.
How do you say your last name?
Kewee.
Kewee. Thank you so much. So you have first place, you have a sign, a certificate, and a check for $50. Would you like to say anything?
We only want, because she's a slave driver.
And you did it all yourself? Thank you. Thank you so much. That was good advice for all the wives out there. You can encourage your spouse to do this. Yes. So what's new, the San Bruno Beautification Task Force is always looking for ways to improve the look of the city. We encourage support and implement a variety of programs and efforts. Community participation and comments are always welcome. If you would like to join the committee, or you have any comments, please call our council member Irene O'Connell. Her number is 589-9985. You can also email her through the city website. And we're going to move on to our next category, which is neighborhood improvement programs. These programs will be designated to target beautification issues related to a specific neighborhood, area, or problem. We selected the tree planters on San Mateo Avenue, the avenues as our first project. Working with Parks and Recreation and partnering with the San Bruno Chamber of Commerce, we are encouraging businesses to be foster parents and adopt a planter closest to their business. The city will pay for and plant drought-tolerant, low-water-use plants and flowers. The business owners are asked to keep an eye on the plants, pick up any garbage, and notify the Parks and Rec Department if they see any problems developing. Our first participant is a new business to San Bruno, Diddly Doo's. And we have the owner of the business here, Mike. You want to come on up, Mike? We planted flowers, and the planter in front of his business, he has been gracious enough to keep it watered, keep them healthy, and foster them. So Mike, we have a certificate for you.
Thank you to the Beautification Task Force. Felicia did a great job, contacted us in helping us set this up. We were kind of looking for things to do as well. We noticed a lot of trash in there, it was just unsightly in the front facade. But now, since we've joined the program, we see a lot of improvement with the upkeeping, less garbage in there, only one or two paper scrap items that we take care of very well. We love the flowers out there. We noticed people stopping to take a look at them, saying, hey, that's new, all right? And we encourage other business owners to join the program as well, and really do something for San Mateo Avenue especially. Thank you.
Mike, Mike. Now, you're on cable TV, so tell us a little bit about your business.
Oh, wonderful. Diddly Doo is an indoor children's play center, started by myself and my wife, Bernice, and our, we were inspired by our son, Jordan, who's 20 months yesterday, so happy birthday, Jordan. We found challenges being new parents, and my wife grew up in San Bruno, and we now live in South City, and her parents are still from San Bruno. So we really took a closer look at the community here, and felt that there's a real strong family community that's just missing a little bit of something, you know? And so we started this business, an idea, we took a look at the challenges we faced, some of our friends are facing. We're on our middle 30s now, and taking that baby step for life. And so, we wanted to bring something to the area where children can feel safe, parents can have an easier time playing with their children, but not just parents, grandparents especially, aunts and uncles, even those for busy parents who have daycare people come in with nannies. They find it an enriching place for them to meet other children, especially at that young age. And we really are happy with the location we chose, and we really love downtown San Bruno, and we look forward to the many new things that are going to be coming in the future. So, Indoor Play Center, Diddly Doo, 544 San Mateo Avenue, come and check us out. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the CQ Arts for Kids, the place to paint, draw, and so much more at 455 San Mateo Avenue. This is the next participant in this program, and it's Claudia Quinn. Claudia, are you here with us tonight? Yes, thank you. Come on down. We appreciate you taking time and responsibility to care for the new plants that we've put in the planter out in front of your business.
Thank you.
And we have a certificate for you.
Thank you.
And would you like to say something?
Well, thank you very much for the planter with the beautiful plants. We just received it last week, and the kids were anxious to help plant it as well. So it looks great, it's such an improvement over the garbage, the trash receptacle that we had out in front before. So I'm thrilled to, you know, try to take care of it, talk to the plants, hope they grow. And it just looks great. I just encourage other business owners to try to have that done for their planter boxes as well, because San Mateo Avenue has great small businesses. And we're all struggling, and we all need everybody's help and support. So even in the smallest way, everything really, really helps. And I think it's great. So thanks very much.
Claudia, tell us a little bit about your business also.
Well, CQ's Art for Kids, I've been there about a year. We have art classes, craft classes, I have a new drawing instructor that's helping kids ages five to seven and eight and up learn the classical methods of drawing and the basics. We do birthday parties on the weekends. Just a lot of fun, fun things. And I've been well-received in the community, and I just look forward to being there for a long time with everybody's support.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
This is a program that's sponsored by the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency. It's a rebate program that gives residents and property owners from $500 to $3,000 for converting front lawns into water-efficient landscapes. The following photo is a workshop of participants creating a demonstration garden in front of Fire Station 51 on El Camino in San Bruno. This program is effective through June 30th, 2013, and the application and forms are on the city website. It's a little challenging to find, but they are there. I did print them out today. If you need help finding them, please contact the city clerk, Carol Bonner, and she will be happy to direct you in the right spot. So let me show you some pictures of the project in front of the fire station. We had community participation, pulled out the lawn, put in some zerriscaping. So next year, if you participate in the Lawn Begone program, not only could you receive a check from the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, you could be nominated for a beautification award under the category of zerriscaping. We would be happy to acknowledge your efforts, and we encourage you to pull out your lawns and put in some zerriscaping. We thank you, and this concludes our program for 2012.
Well, thank you very much, a very informative presentation. And I guess we're going to have a class on slave driving pretty soon.
Slave driving. We, one last thing that the Beautification Task Force did at the Taste of San Bruno last week, we, with the help of Recology San Bruno, to find ways to foster environmental awareness, this year, for the first time, we manned the garbage stations at the Taste of San Bruno. I know, it's not very glamorous, but somebody has to do it. As a result, we recycled 60 pounds of waste, 40 pounds of organics that went into composting, and out of the entire Taste of San Bruno evening, only five pounds went to garbage. Everyone's efforts to keep 100 pounds of material out of the landfill is a great beginning, and we encourage everybody at home to use your blue recycle bin and recycle everything you possibly can, get a composting container, put it in your backyard, and compost everything that's organic. We'd like to acknowledge the members of the Beautification Task Force. We have some of them here with us this evening. Emile Hans, Bridget Lopez, Sally Calvert, Carolyn Livinggood. Couple of our members that aren't with us tonight, Sandy Headley and Carol Moriarty, and of course, our fearless leader, Irene O'Connell. Without Irene, this committee would not exist. And we have been here in the city, helping everybody for 16 years? 16 years. So it's been a long road for Irene, but she has kept us in forward motion. And of course, Felicia Nervy is our member from San Bruno Recology. Without the efforts and the participation and the support of Recology San Bruno, the Beautification Task Force could not do what we do each year. So we thank you, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And those of you who received awards are welcome to exit before the meeting starts. You are not being held hostage. Thank you for attending.
Thank you. All right, item 4B is receiver presentation on something that's relatively new, and a lot of fun, and very well-received, our Libraries Homework Center program.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Barbara Brexford, I'm the Children's Services Manager at the library. And last spring, the San Bruno Library opened a homework center. I'm here tonight to tell you that story. So, what is a San Bruno Library Homework Center? It's a drop-in program to provide a quiet study space and a little help. It's for students from kindergarten through eighth grade. It's a learning-friendly environment with computers, tables, and homework supplies. The open hours fit the school schedule, Monday through Wednesday from 3:00 to 6:00, and Thursday from 1:30 to 6:00 to match the San Bruno School District early-release day. We're closed on Friday. Homework assistance is provided by the Homework Center site manager and volunteer tutors. The program is free for the students. We do require that the parents sign the children up and give permission for them to attend. So the Homework Center allows the library to provide a study location, the Homework Center, and a social location, which is the library children's room and outside on the patio for the 30 to 60 students in the library after school. Previously, children who really wanted a quiet study space were competing with adults for space on the mezzanine. Last spring, there were 104 students registered for the program, and the average attendance was 20 students per day. And so far this year, we have about 60 people signed up right now, and we're seeing 18 to 20 students a day. And you can see that students are reporting that their grades improved after attending the Homework Center. So the Homework Center also expands the library resources from five full-service computers in the children's room to the mobile laptop lab with 16 full-service laptops, backup batteries, headphones, and a wireless printer. Parents find the Homework Center resources and space a great place to help their children with assignments and research projects. Some come on a regular basis, and others come on a my computer, my printer broke down crisis, so we're really happy to be able to help them with that. Here, in this picture, you see students using the library service called Tutor.com. This is a service that the library has been providing to the San Bruno community for the last four years. And it's accessible on our website to all the residents of San Bruno, but we have purchased additional sessions for the students in the Homework Center to use. They've found it really helpful, especially the middle-school students for their math assignments. And here's the payoff. This is a quote from one of the students that uses the Homework Center. Here's my little advertisement for our volunteer recruitment. The Homework Center is a great example of how a small investment can really make a difference in the lives of children in the community. The volunteer tutors directly affect the children's experience. Last year, we had nine volunteers who contributed 170 hours of service to the Homework Center, covering about half the center's open hours. We connected with the school district librarian to provide access to some of the math textbooks and help us to publicize the program as well. In fact, one student who attended most days last spring has graduated from eighth grade, and she's told us she's very eager to start volunteering and helping other kids in the Homework Center. So, how were we able to create the Homework Center? First, the location had to be available. So from 2009 to 2011, John Alita, on behalf of the library, applied and received federal grants in the amount of $100,000 to install two chairlifts and complete ADA upgrades. Accessibility allowed us to use the downstairs community room for more purposes, such as community programming. Because we had this new available location, we were able to successfully compete for and receive $30,000 from the California State Library Administered Federal Library Services and Technology Act program to furnish the community center, the community room with computers, chairs, tables, the laptop lab, and to pilot the Homework Center. So we received the grant last October, purchased materials, created policies, hired a site manager, and opened the Homework Center by the end of January. This current year, the funding for the Homework Center site manager is incorporated in the library budget. When students are finished with their assigned work, they enjoy selecting books for silent reading. They love having all the choice the library offers, plus the guidance of the library staff to help them find a book which fits their interests. It's wonderful to see this happening, as research has shown time and again, that access to a quantity of books directly relates to a child's reading success. So how did we study the effectiveness of the program? Well, we asked students, teachers, and parents to tell us what it meant to them. And you can see the results here. Several teachers reported an increase in their students' confidence since attending the Homework Center. You did that one already? Okay. And, all right, and the children are telling us as well, this was a dramatic example, my grade, my math grade went up. We find we help a lot of students with their math homework. So I'm really pleased to report out on this successful project. Last spring, it became very clear that the Homework Center provided a valuable resource to the community which fit in with the library mission. We're happy to offer it this year for the entire school year. Thank you for the opportunity to share this story with you tonight.
Well, thank you, it was very exciting, and that's the foundation of the kids, so it's great. Anybody else like to say? Irene?
Thank you. This is exactly what I hope the future will bring in a bigger way to San Bruno, when we have a facility that has room to do more. It's a community center, it's just what you said, and I think it's fabulous. So keep up the good work, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Item number five is review of the agenda. Any changes? Okay. Item number six, approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting, September 25th, 2012, and special city council meeting of October 3rd, 2012.
Mayor, I'd like to pull the October 3rd minutes, please.
All right. Ask for action on September 25th minutes. So move?
Second.
Motion second. On the question... On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
And Carol would like to pull the October third minutes?
They'll be resubmitted at the next meeting.
All right, thank you. Item number seven, consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implement in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Any action on the consent calendar?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second on the consent calendar. On the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight, public hearings. We don't have any public hearings this evening. Item number nine is public comment on items not on the agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council under public comment?
Robert Rico, Seventh Avenue. Just two things really quick. This Sunday is the last day at Farmer's Market where you can guess the weight of the big pumpkin and win a prize that'll be awarded next Sunday. Between now and November eighteenth, which is the last Sunday, there will be numerous contests that, so hopefully you'll come out and find out what's going on. More importantly, I wanted to update you on PG&E's supportive action. Yesterday, they, in working to clean up and recover the exposed section of line one-oh-one just east of the property line at the Angus Gate, they found that there was a, what they felt was an abandoned city storm drain entrance right in there, that if it was used, it would run water right over what they're trying to fix. So PG&E came out yesterday, ran their little, as I call it, their mini-pig about a hundred feet up the line with the video camera and the lights, and we all stood there and watched, and about a hundred feet up inside, we found a whole brick, plug put in there. So they now know that it appears that that line is not being used. They can block it off and speed up the repair and recovering of that line, so that I and the numerous residents in the area, and I'm sure all of San Bruno, is pleased with the speed at which PG&E has speeded up working on that and the fact that they are out there to improve the safety of that line, because it's very, it's much needed, but safety has to be first. So I just wanted to bring you up to date.
All right, thank you. Next, please. Just state your name and your street.
Yes, Joanne McLaughlin, Claremont Drive. I'd just like to address the notification of meetings. You had a special meeting last Wednesday during the presidential debate. But, and it had to do, in part with city business, in part was related to the restitution fund that's been received from PG&E. And many of us are interested in how that fund is going to be used. And when, back March thirteenth, when the money was announced that the settlement had been reached with PG&E, at that time, you said to watch the website over the next few months, and, you know, you'd be seeking community input. Well, I have been watching the website. In fact, I looked at the website the night, you know, Tuesday night, and all I saw, because I was curious, you know, what's coming up, and all I saw was special meetings are the second and the fourth, I mean, regular meetings are the second and the fourth Tuesday. And I looked at city council, I looked, you know, I was looking around, you know. I could not find any notice about this special meeting. So I was flabbergasted when I, you know, I got a late email Wednesday that there was going to be this meeting, and I couldn't come. And so I was very disappointed, because I would have liked to have been here to have had something, I would have contributed, I believe, to the discussion. So, I was curious, well, why, after seven months, did it have to be discussed that night? That was one issue. And, you know, like yesterday with the CPUC and PG&E, we're all upset because with rightly, that, you know, things are going on behind closed doors. Well, if we're not aware of what's on the agenda or what's going to be discussed, it's like it's going on behind closed doors. We're, you know, how do we find out? How can the process be opened up? So that's my question. How can you improve communication so that when there is a topic that's going to be brought up that we're interested, you know, that we would like to come and be involved in? How do we find out? I mean, I have to admit, I don't turn on Channel One very much. You know, my kids are out of sports, you know, I'm, they're not in grammar school. I don't very much turn on Channel One, and I know that's one way you do it. I don't go to the senior center, except when there are meetings here, like this. And I don't go to City Hall. I mean, it's just very awkward to try to find out the information. So, could there be some notification? Or could you, on topics like that have to do, that are so, well, that there's so much interest in? You know, like this seventy million dollars, people are curious. They really want to know what's going on. So could that not be on special meeting? Could that be on an agenda where there, it's, there's more notice? Okay. So anyway, I leave that with you to figure out. How could communication be improved? Also, should it be a not-for-profit, or should it be a nonprofit? Because I've been talking, I know some people in nonprofits, and they felt that really, possibly, this shouldn't really be a not-for-profit. You know, that should be explored. What is, what is really the best way to go? Okay, to research that. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. And without stepping all over myself, I'd like the city manager to make the comments she made that evening regarding notices and the difference, if there is any, between nonprofit and not-for-profit.
I'll start with the last question first. The settlement agreement that was reached between the city and PG&E last spring, in March, specifically calls for the funds to be turned over and for there to be a not-for-profit or a nonprofit. The city attorney tells me that those are, those terms are used interchangeably. And that those, that the funds, use of the funds will be directed by or decision-making and discussion about the use of the funds will occur in the venue of the not-for-profit. The, so that's, that's the first issue. That actually is called for specifically in the settlement agreement, and it was one of the key issues of discussion during the negotiations for the settlement funds, inasmuch as there was a, an interest to assure that those funds, and this, I could say, I think is a shared interest, that those funds would ultimately be used for the benefit of the community and not simply placed into the city's general fund, say for example, to plug a hole in the, in the city's budget or deal with the deficit, for example. Secondly, regarding the establishment of the not-for-profit, that is a, an action that needs to be taken by the city council in determining how that entity is to be structured and how that is to be, how that activity is to be carried out. It's a decision that ultimately will be made by the city council. City council scheduled a meeting, at staff's suggestion, scheduled a meeting on October third for one of several conversations that will need to be had by the city council in order to work through a number of issues that are relevant to the establishment of that entity. The discussion that occurred on October third was scheduled as a special meeting under the Brown Act, Ralph M. Brown Act, the state's open meeting law. A twenty-four-hour notice is required for the scheduling of a special meeting. That notice was provided in the manner prescribed by law, which does not exactly address the comment that was made by Ms. McLaughlin in that I think the interest that's being expressed is that there be a wider and longer time period for the community to be advised about how this process is proceeding. And in fact, that issue was identified and discussed by the city council at the meeting, and staff received your direction that information be made available to the public, both about the discussion that occurred on October third and the pending, or upcoming, rather, discussion items and the schedule as best we can anticipate it for those future discussions. Now, at this point, we do not have a precise schedule for future meetings. However, we can certainly outline a means by which the public can be advised and where you can find information in order to keep abreast of this process as it goes forward. Again, there was no discussion, and the city council will be taking no action. Having to do, during this time period where the nonprofit entity is being put together, there will be no discussion and no decision-making by the city council having to do with the actual use of the funds. So that is a, that's a topic that is not yet in front of anybody for, for discussion or decision. We are intending to distribute a next focus newsletter to the public at the end of this month, just prior to the end of this month, and it is our intent, at the council's direction, to include in that newsletter an article about this process, and we hope will provide both the citizens in the audience tonight as well as the community generally, additional information about this process and where you can find information going forward. In addition, we have posted a, the discussion outline in the form of a PowerPoint presentation. We have posted that on our website, and I haven't checked it yet, but I requested that that be posted on our city website in a manner that it is readily visible from the homepage. So I'm going to check that tonight and make sure that I can find it, in the hope that if I can find it, others can find it. But it is, that discussion outline and all of the topics that were presented for city council discussion are fully incorporated in that document, and anybody who wants to look at that will be able to get a very good idea of the discussion that the city council had on October third.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker?
Hi, I'm Kathy Di Renzi, Claremont Drive. Just a little note on that, the confusion came in where the city council says they follow the Roberts Rules of Order, and special meeting is fourteen days. I'm not an expert, but that's what we were kind of confused about. But the bottom line is, we just want to work together to, whoever's interested or wants to be involved can be involved. I'm here tonight to ask for support from everyone in San Bruno. I sent emails to each of you today, because yesterday was a very disappointing day when the administrative law judge temporarily suspended public hearings on possible penalties against PG&E. And I'm really mad about that. It's on hold for one week, they're going to meet again next Monday, but they're considering to expand it even longer. This will not be in the public, it'll be done behind closed doors, so we don't know what's going to happen. I don't trust them at all. This Thursday at nine o'clock, the PUC has a regular meeting scheduled where we can, during public comments, stand up and let them know how we feel. We can look right at President PV and let him know how we feel about having these hearings in public versus private. My opinion, criminal. I was home that day and ran for my life, so I don't want them to get off easily, and I need everybody's help. Everybody that can be there, if you can make it, that would be great. So that's at nine o'clock, five oh five VNS. And, let's see. It's really confusing to me, because the administrative judge, I think, works for the PUC. The PUC oversees PG&E. So, I don't know what we can do as a city. I wanted to know if the city is doing anything? If you filed against the PUC because of what they're doing, suspending the hearings, taking them out of the public? And I want to know if the city of San Bruno is doing anything? If you're going to be active in? I know the mayor was up there Monday with Jerry Hill, so thank you for that. But I wonder if the city is going to file any papers or anything against this? That would be something, that would be great. I know the city received a settlement, a lot of money, from PG&E, but this is anything but settled for our neighborhood. So we need you to stick with us, I mean, stay together. We'll do whatever you need us to do. I mean, I'll get people together. If you can support us, we'll support you, and make sure that this is handled properly.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. One moment, John, city manager.
Just wanted to make a very quick comment, and that is that the city is participating actively and aggressively in the hearing process as it has, it's actually been in process. The hearings are suspended now, but have been, two weeks of hearings have been completed. The city has been present by its representatives at each of those hearings. We are actively engaged in both presenting written testimony during the, during the time period that that occurred last spring, and providing cross-examination to witnesses in the, in the proceedings. Those are fully public hearings. They are now suspended, as Ms. Di Renzi indicates. And I would add that the city's legal counsel, outside legal counsel, did make a statement, as did the, the mayor made a statement at a press conference outside of the PUC on Monday morning. Our legal counsel presented an oral argument in the judges, in the hearing room to oppose the motion that you are referring to, that was submitted by the division of the CPUC that is managing these proceedings. So, I just want to assure both the city council and the public, this is a highest priority issue, these entire proceedings, just as we participated virtually on a daily basis throughout the year-long NTSB investigation and its conclusions. The city is participating again actively, aggressively, and nearly on a daily basis over this last approximately twenty months that the CPUC proceedings have been occurring.
Thank you. John?
Okay. Carol? I'd like to preface my remarks by saying, nothing against firemen. This will be strictly procedurally. And I can't say that some of my best friends are firemen, because that's not the case. Although I have several former students who are firemen. I hope that if I ever need to be rescued, that there's only a minimal hesitation.
John, just for the record, tell us your name and your street.
Okay, remember in May two thousand eleven, when police firefighters, coast guard, and other spectators did nothing while a man drowned fifty yards offshore? My hat's off to the untrained twenty-year-old female spectator who retrieved the body. Please tell me that there are some citizens in San Bruno who can come up with fifteen ideas in one hour on how to feed firefighters who are on duty for long periods of time without taking a truck and three firemen shopping? Why is this shopping on city time accepted by a public who might be injured by the extra minutes that are used to shop? An informed public should ask for a complete accounting of how many trucks, how many men are sent out, how many times in a forty-eight-hour period, where they shop, and for how long? Is San Bruno informed? Okay, I'll be the one to ask. Please send me the answers to the aforementioned questions so that I may share them with the trusting public, most of whom have computers and know how to shop online. Oh yes, please include the approximate potential risk and the actual approximate cost to the public and their kids. Is the approximate dollar cost several hundred dollars per week? Is the approximate dollar cost several hundred dollars per week? Is the approximate personal risk of injury or death 3%, 5%, 1%? The truth is, you don't know, neither do I. But if it's any risk at all, it shouldn't be. Can you tell me why there is a reason that men leave the station for the purpose of shopping? My contention, that there is a void when this happens. Essentially, taking a truck and three men out of position on the chance that they'll be able to get to a fire on time for a rescue. Rolling the dice, Russian roulette? Firefighters are a safety agency that's held to a higher standard. I've had firefighters tell me that when they leave the shop, the firehouse is covered. How? By radio? Will a radio put out a fire or breathe life into a child? Unless the firefighters are there physically, don't tell me it's covered. That's not acceptable. Unless they send other firefighters, unlikely, to act as substitutes, as teachers do, to watch their class. This is a dangerous safety void. When the inevitable happens, when someone is injured or killed while firefighters are at the closest house, we're shopping, who will be sued criminally and civilly for negligence? More importantly, who will be the victims? There seems to be some kind of a bizarre equation here, shopping equals fire victims. Put a slash to that equal sign, it's not equal. This is a tradition that's outmoded as typewriters, human pin setters, elevator operators, and marathon dancing. I strongly suggest shopping online for the San Bruno firefighters. There are those who will trip over the truth, get up, dust themselves off, and continue on as though nothing had happened. That's by Winston Churchill, thank you.
Thank you. Item 10 is contract of business, first item A, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute contracts with, would someone else, oh, I'm sorry. Didn't see you standing up there. We have one more speaker under public comment.
Thank you. Betty Coons, Claremont Drive. I'm also concerned about how we're informed of different things. I know we live far from the actual implosion site, but we were promised that the pipe would be filled. So I have to call PG&E. Dave Gutierrez and I are on a first-name basis now about getting the pipe filled. We checked in with the, the trailer on, on the property on Claremont. They didn't know that it wasn't filled. So my question is, how do we get the information? Do we have to be the ones chasing the PG&E truck down to find out what's going to happen? Thank you.
I think we can get that posted, there's some, city manager?
We can make sure that that information is posted on the bulletin board at the, at the city's office site, the, the trailer in the Glenview neighborhood. The, the, the pipe has been filled from 1121 Glenview down to the explosion site, and PG&E is continuing to, at the city's request, based on numerous requests that we received from the community, to validate the integrity of the pipe before it's filled, and the potential for contamination in the soil around the pipe. And so that work is continuing, and until that work has been completed and we can certify that the necessary testing has been completed and that those results are satisfactory, we will not allow the pipe to be filled as opposed to removed. So at this point, the previous status of that discussion is still continuing, and the city will, will be able to put more timely information on the, on the bulletin board at the, at the site. In addition to that, we have been providing door-to-door delivered announcements and notices when work is occurring in a, in a specific part of the neighborhood. So there would be no work by PG&E on the pipe specifically without a, a prior notice to the, to the immediately affected neighborhood.
All right, thank you. Anyone else under public comment? All right. Item 10A, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute contracts with West Yost Associates for engineering design services in the amount of $120,300, and with NGO Incorporated for engineering geotechnical services, and the amount of $30,000 for the Glenview Water Tank Number Three Replacement Project.
Honorable members, council members, good evening. I have, I have here Will Anderson, who is the project manager, and who will help me with all of the answers to your questions. The purpose of this project is to replace tank number three. The tank is located on San Bruno Avenue and performs a critical function in our water system, providing storage for peak water flow and also fire flow. The tank is structurally deficient to withstand a major seismic event. Back in January of last year, you rejected a, all of the bids received for the retrofit of this tank. The reason why you rejected all of the bids was that, based on our market assessment at this time, at that time, the received proposed cost for the retrofit of the tank was equal, or maybe slightly even higher, than the cost would have been to replace the tank with a new tank. Since then, the city retained a structural, a structural expertise firm to develop the specification for the tank. The specification for the tank was developed specifying all of the characteristics, characteristics of the tank, such as the capacity of the tank, the life expectancy of the tank, pre-stress concrete versus steel, seismic loading for the tank. Also, a geotechnical firm was retained, and preliminary study was conducted for the site. Now, having the specification for the tank ready, it's necessary to design the site itself and to develop the construction specification to go out for bid. This site-specific design would include demolition of the existing tank, also development of the design for, for the connections to the tank, and all of the site work necessary to install the new tank at this location. Also, reason why two proposals were received, West Yost was deemed the most qualifying to provide that service for us, based on their specific knowledge of our water system. They are helping us with the development of the water system master plan. The recommendation of the preliminary geotechnical study was also to further investigate, to determine if there are no faults races in the vicinity of the existing tank. This specific field investigation requires specialized expertise. Reason why NGO was recommended by West Yost, us, the best firm, to provide us with that specialized expertise. The total cost of this project is estimated at this time to be 2.4, around 2.4 million, and the cost of the tank was included in our 10-year financial projection for the Water Enterprise Fund. I, I will stand for any question what you might have, and Will will help me with the answers.
Any questions of staff at this time?
To the chair?
Ken?
You give a brief explanation in the staff report on the preliminary geotechnical study, $9,000 study. So now, with something in line of $30,000 from possibly a, a different consultant, what, what will happen? I mean, is, I mean, is there going to be test borings, you know, to, to what extent? Because, you know, there were test borings for the $9,000 preliminary study, so just curious as to what constitutes something that is, you know, four ti, three times large, three times more expensive?
I will try to summarize at high level, and maybe Will can add to it. Yes, you are correct, the first geotechnical study was based on borings, and this study will open, open cut in the field, and will trace in the field any possible remnants of any fault trace, what they can see in the field itself. This is a very extensive field work with, conducted by the expert team. That, maybe if you can add anything else?
Yeah. The initial soils report was, you know, a standard template for any construction project, soils borings, and analysis thereof. But due to the site's proximity to the San Andreas Fault, it was highly recommended that a surface, and due to concerns about surface fault rupture, and where the ground surface actually gets displaced, it was recommended that further investigations be conducted, and like Clara was saying, along in deep trench to analyze the subsurface conditions. So that way, all our bidders, designers, have much more accurate information to design
Is there, is there a chance that it's not a suitable site? Is there a chance that, that, you know, that this, that this investigation, you know, uncovers the fact that there are severe enough trace, trace faults there, that it would be highly, you know, recommended that, you know, that a, that a tank not be, you know, constructed there?
Based on our feedback from the experts so far, the answer is no. Maybe they will have to, depending on the result of the investigation, they will have to include in their design criteria. But it's, based on the feedback so far, it's not possible that would be a fail of law locating the tank at that location.
I think the, the design of the foundation can be adjusted accordingly to the parameters that are set forth, based on the results of the soils report.
And, and just finally, none of this, none of this was, was, none of this study or none of this design was, was incorporated in the retrofit, the retrofit project?
Correct.
Any questions or action by the council? This is the resolution.
To the chair, how old is the tank? What's the age of the tank?
I believe it was constructed in 1951, so we got at least 50, 60 years of useful life out of it.
I mean, currently, it's probably not as useful as it, as it, as it could be, that's why we're wanting to redo it, but, and what is the life expectancy of the new tank?
Be 50 years.
Okay. And just going back to what the vice mayor said, as far as the findings, are those going to be analyzed as far as just the stabilization, because obviously, I don't know what quake it will withstand?
That will be another result of this additional study, we'll get more site-specific information, you know, like ground accelerations, here again, setting parameters that are applicable to the soils conditions that are out there, which our tank designers can account for and build into their design to resist those forces.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
Item 10B, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Acumen Industrial Hygiene, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $48,700 for air quality and soils dust testing services for the Crestmore Neighborhood Reconstruction Project.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Harry Burrows, I'm the city's project manager for the Crestmore Reconstruction Project. Item before you tonight is related to some additional dust that the neighborhood has experienced with the construction that's going on up there. Not only the construction of the infrastructure, but also the construction of the homes in the neighborhood. The city has implemented, since the construction has begun, certain dust control measures, and we've been ramping up those dust control measures as the project has continued as Those include watering the streets, we've doing a lot of construction, material gets put in the streets, so we water the streets quite often. Additionally, we're putting filter fabric down on all of the bare dirt on all of the homes that are being constructed, asking the, the contractors of those homes to do that. We're tarping all the material and/or watering the material that's being hauled off the site in the trucks. We're making sure that all the spoil piles on both the city construction sites, as well as the home sites, are covered as well. And we're doing extra sweeping on, and watering on the weekends, above and beyond what the contract requirements are for the city's contractor. The residents have expressed concerns related to both the amount of dust and also what potentially is within the dust that they're breathing and that's accumulating on their homes and on their cars. So in response to the concerns that have been raised, the city is proposing to do some additional testing of the air and the dust and the soils that are on, the lots that are out there. So San Mateo County did an extensive cleanup of the lots where houses burned down in the aftermath of the fire. And as part of that, the sites were cleared of all debris, and the residual soil was tested for contaminants, hazardous materials. And the results of those tests across the board were that any remaining contaminants were well, well below any thresholds that were deemed harmful for humans. In spite of that, we're proposing to do this additional testing now, just to alleviate the concerns of the residents, and just to verify some of the previous testing. Based upon previous fires that have occurred in California, residential, large-scale residential fires, examples are the Angora Fire up in Tahoe, and the Cedar Fire down in San Diego. There's a list of contaminants or hazardous materials that are prevalent in the aftermath of these fires. There are primarily heavy metals, and asbestos are the, the two primary concerns. So we've sought a proposal from a firm called Acumen Industrial Hygiene, and they've given us a proposal to perform this work. They'll be doing peer review of the work that was previously done by the county, as well as setting up additional testing stations for air and dust gathering, and soil sampling as well. They'll be sampling for those heavy metals, they'll also be looking for asbestos, and they'll also be looking for some compounds that weren't previously tested for as well. The proposal calls for up to eight air and dust sampling locations, they're the ones that are shown on red here. These are just, aren't exact locations, but it's just representative of how they'll be dispersed throughout the neighborhood. And the green squares represent soil test locations. Again, in four to six locations, we'll be taking soil samples and testing those samples for contaminants. Time is of the essence to perform this testing, particularly the air testing, as we're getting into the rainy season, and with the moisture in the air, it's a little bit hard to collect the dust, because there's not as much of it. So we are proposing that this work begin immediately upon your authorization, and Acumen is standing by, ready to perform that work. Additionally, there's been some questions regarding the dust and silt making its way into the storm drain system, and, you know, are there any concerns with that? I, I guess the answer is, is twofold. One, we're really trying to minimize any... One, we're really trying to minimize any material that makes it into the storm drain system with the SWIP requirements that we have out on the site. The, in terms of any hazardous materials making its way into the storm drain, obviously the testing that will be performed will determine what if any hazardous materials are still out there. And to say that no sediment's going to make its way into the storm drain would, would probably be an exaggeration. This is construction, but we're minimizing it as much as possible. Our current contractor up there, Shaw, we've got a pretty stringent silt management program in place with them. We make them pump out the storm drains with vector trucks weekly. They have to clean around the catch basins on a daily basis. So we're trying to minimize whatever goes or potentially goes into the storm drain One, I'll digress here for a second and talk about some additional testing that is being performed here shortly, based upon some concerns that were raised by the city council previously, as well as some of the residents about the soils around line 132. PG&E has a proposal into us, and we'll be meeting with them later this week to discuss it further, about testing the soils around line 132. So we're going to be determining the number of tests that'll be performed in the locations that makes, make the most sense, and we'll be sharing those results as soon as they're available to you. That concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
To the chair, very quick, you'd already alluded to the steps that are being taken to try to contain any type of flow into the, the drain. Would you not say in your professional opinion that as far as that construction, the neighborhood and what the city steps are, are far exceeding what any normal construction would see and does see?
I think particularly in the amount of street sweeping and watering that we're doing, as well as the frequent vectoring, that would be a correct statement.
Thank you.
Through the chair?
Irene?
How are you letting the residents know that this is all going to be happening if we pass this tonight? Or how will you, I guess?
I, your mic wasn't on, but I think your question was, how are we letting the residents know that this work is, is going on? Twofold. One, we did post a notice on the rebuildcrestmore.org website last Friday, notifying them of this potential action that you're going to take here tonight. And if it's approved, then we will be further notifying them, providing them more detail, as well as, part of the detail being where these test stations will be, how long they'll be out, and when we expect results back.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions or actions by the council?
Through the chair, I'll, I'll introduce the resolution.
Vice Mayor Ibera?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Item 10C, adopt a resolution rejecting a bid for the street rehabilitation slurry seal project.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and member of the City Council. My name's Tina Singh. I'm the associate engineer and the project manager of the item in front of you tonight. It is not often that we come before you recommending rejecting construction bids. So before I go into the items in front of you tonight in details, I'd like to share a couple statistics relating to the city past construction contract bids. So since beginning of last year, the city advertised 20 projects for construction bids and received two or more bids for 16 projects, 16 of these projects. The remaining four that had less than two bids are more, were more specific project or specialized project and attracted far less or smaller group amount of contractors. Now going back to the item in front of you, as you're aware, in spring 2011, staff completed the preliminary, preliminary resurfacing street list that incorporated community concerns and comments from the city council. Following the completion of this preliminary list, in-depth field inspection, payment court sampling and testings were done. With the additional data and the testing results, staff was able to further assess the payment conditions and was able to identify more specific resurfacing type of method. These types of resurfacing methods are slurry seal, mill and overlay of asphalt concrete, and payment reconstruction, and payment reconstruction is basically removing the upper layer of asphalt and all the sub-material underneath the asphalt. To reduce construction contract by avoiding high markup by the general paving contractors when they bid on project that would require them to subcontract the slurry seal portion of the work, the slurry seal list was divided into two. One construction document specifically for the slurry seal project was prepared, and another was done for the overlay and reconstruction type of work. The slurry seal project was advertised twice on the San Mateo Daily Journal. Notices was, were sent out to 18 slurry seal contractors, but the city, the city received only one bid, and this bid was in an amount of roughly 1.3 million and is half a million over the engineer's estimate. This bid price is significantly overpriced compared to the current market condition. Staff recommends the city council to reject the bid. This would delay the slurry seal work for a few months, but will not have significant negative impact on the street conditions. By the same token, the benefit is minimal if the city council approve, approve additional funds to award this contract. If the city council reject the bid, staff will be able to re-advertise the project, the slurry seal project in December and for late spring, early summer construction pending weather condition. Staff also plans to advertise the overlay and reconstruction project in the same timeframe in, actually in spring and for summer construction. So all in all, by the end of 2013 construction season, you will have roughly around 66 street blocks, very in length and width, of course, and to be slurry seal, and 15 street will be overlay or constructed. With that, I conclude my presentation and available to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions of staff?
It sounds very aggressive, and I, I understand why you're recommending that we, we reject the, reject the bids. I'm just curious, as a, as a member of the surface infrastructure, is this something, I don't recall, is this something that we, as, as a subcommittee agreed on? Is this something that is part of our decision process? Or is, or is there something that the Surface Infrastructure Committee should be, should be reviewing as we, as we move forward? I mean, I'm, I'm very in favor of, you know, the aggressive program that we're going to have in 2013, but it seems that things have sort of gone ahead of what the, possibly what my understanding of the Surface Infrastructure Committee's purposes.
This is the list of treatment and list of streets which was approved by the subcommittee last year, but this project never was implemented. The list was approved by the subcommittee and now will be implemented.
I, I didn't want, I, I was look, searching for the right way to say this, but I'm, I understand that, you know, that time has passed, but, and I know that we were positioning ourselves once we got the, the certain amount of money and things.
Any other questions or action by the council?
Adopt a resolution.
Vice Mayor Ibera?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Item 10D, our final 10, receive report on the updated pavement management program.
And this is the last report tonight, and the purpose of this report is to provide you with background information on the condition of the payment for the upcoming, this information is provided to you in, before the next Monday study session for the proposed capital improvement plan, on the capital improvement plan. The payment management is a asset management process that incorporates lifecycle cost and plans repair to optimize all overall payment condition. Also is a tool to develop long-term funding alternative and difference investment level and based on which to predict future payment condition for our system. In March of last year, you were provided with the latest update of the payment management report. Based on last December field survey, this year, the updated report came out. Based on this latest report, our overall payment condition is in, is fair with a 60 PCI overall. Also is included in the report, possible investment alternatives. If the city will maintain our current level of investment of .8 year, in average yearly investment in our system, investment level which is included in our proposed CIP based on the available transportation funds today, then in the planning horizon of 10 years, our overall payment condition will fall to a poor condition. In order for us to be able to maintain the overall payment condition at the existing level, then the city would need to invest in our system in average about 1.8 million a year by year in our system. MTC set a region-wide goal for payment condition for the whole region. That goal is 75, which is good. To get to that level, the city would need to invest in average about 3.1 million in, on yearly basis in our system. But you have also attached to this staff report is a draft proposed five-year list of streets and treatment which could be proposed to apply to those streets, assuming our existing .8 investment level included in our CIP. This list is a draft. This would require further to be defined and analyzed by the subcommittee. This concludes my presentation. If you have any further questions.
Any questions?
Real quick to the chair, just I, I think when we have these items come to us, it would be nice to see also when there's certain streets or areas that are being brought up on slurry or whatever the type of maintenance or updating to them is done, that we also have a reference point as to when the last time that street or intersection was done. So we, we know the time lapse between what work was done when and what work is being proposed when, if that makes sense. Also, I noticed that there used to be more of an annual analysis of the conditions in the various jurisdictions, and obviously now that's gone to every other year or what have you. Is that just because of a, the timeframe that it usually takes staff in other jurisdictions than ours to go and assess the conditions of the roadways, and now it's not as an annual update?
Based on our MTC requirement, you, each agency has to update the overall system survey each five years and the arteries and the collectors each second year. That's why the city updated our report this year, two years from last time. MTC always show that report as rolling three-year average. That's why they are showing on yearly basis, even if the reports are coming out only just for those time periods. And that's why sometime those reports are a little bit conflicting with the exact number shown in our yearly report versus the region-wide rolling three-years average.
Thank you.
Anything else?
And also to your first portion of your comment, we'll be, we intend to have that requested additional information for the subcommittee meeting when that five-year plan will be presented.
Thank you.
I'm going to come off the wall here.
Again?
Dangerous.
I'm just wondering, this, this is, you know, it's an ongoing thing, and if we go by number one, I mean, it's just a moving target that we're never going to catch up with. I mean, if we're looking at really making a difference at three to $4 million a year, has there been any consideration, and, you know, maybe it's totally off, you know, way out of the question, about hiring a, you know, a crew, a city crew, that's all they do is do street improvements, instead of, instead of, you know, bidding it out, you know, on an annual basis? Has that been, I mean, is, I mean, it might, you may have a simple answer that says, no, it's absolutely out of the question, it's more expensive or whatever, but is it something that we, as an ongoing thing that we can do and possibly get it done in half, half the time, or something that, you know, may never get done in, in, in the eight to 10 years that we're looking at?
I will just provide you with my reaction to your and professional assessment at this time to your question. Overlaying and reconstruction is a very specialized type of treatment, and yes, it is possible, and the department can come up with a estimated cost, how much that would cost. But would be my assumption that a specialized contractor would be more efficient and more cost-effective providing those type of heavy construction treatment than our own crew. But some agencies had in past time and still do, construction crew who is doing that type of work, and that it is possible. But would be my assessment that less intense type of treatment, probably our agency would be able to compete with the private sector, but very heavy construction like, like reconstruction and heavy overlay probably less. Or even if will be a, a learning curve until the city will develop that expertise level and really invest in, in equipment and everything else, that would be very costly.
And, and I don't mean just bringing our streets depart, our public works, streets crew out there and say, go ahead, try and slurry this, slurry the street. I mean, obviously, we would have to, you know, bring in, possibly hire some, you know, some expertise. But at a few million dollars a year and, you know, and not getting that, you know, it doesn't appear that we get, you know, make that much leeway with $3 million a year. I mean, it, it, it does help, but I'm just curious to see what more, you know, is there something that we can do that's, make that $3 million a year go further? You know, if we have in-house staff doing some of the minor work on, you know, on some of our better, you know, better-conditioned streets, you know?
In the last five years, the average investment in our street was around $625,000 in average in the last five years. And that assessment, how much would cost us to basically establish that expertise in-house versus outside contractor, will be possible for us to provide you with that information.
All right. Other questions? This is a report, there's no actions. Item number 11, reported Commission's Board to Item number eleven, reported commissioned boards and committees. We don't have any this evening, other than the beautification awards earlier. Comments from council members? Item twelve.
All right. I would just like to congratulate, I know St. Bruno's Church had a one-hundredth anniversary just this last weekend, and I think it's a wonderful community there. They do a lot of diverse work with all of our citizens, and I just want to say congratulations on behalf of the council and the city. Closed session. We don't have a closed session this evening, and this meeting will adjourn to the next council meeting on October twenty-third, right here at the senior center.